All votes tonight will be cast by the individual aldermen in which they will, each individual will be asked how they vote on each issue tonight. That's part of the requirement with the teleconference participation. First item of business, approval of the official agenda.
Mr. Mayor and Board, there are a number of items that you might want to consider placing upon the consent agenda. And I would recommend these for consideration as follows. Roman numeral eight, mayor's business on the second page, both of those items.
Roman numeral eight?
Roman numeral eight on the second page, both of those items. On Roman numeral nine, item C, E, and F. Roman numeral ten, airport business, items one through four.
We're gonna pull five.
And it's my understanding that the airport commission has requested item five to be pulled from this agenda for later consideration. Item six, consent. Building and codes, we probably will need information here, that. Office of the city clerk, number C, item two. Electric department, item four, five, six, and seven. Fire department, capital E, that first item, only item, consent. Item F, personnel, items one, two, and three.
Yes, remove those from consent. Mr. Boyd did a good job last time. They can get a little bit more experience at the table down here. Let's hear from him.
That will be fine. Gee, public services, the single item, item one. Does anyone wish to add any additional items or remove any of the items suggested?
If not, do we have an approval of this official agenda with these consent items?
I move approval of the agenda with specified consent items.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We will start roll call. Ward one, how do you vote?
Yay.
Ward two?
Yay.
Ward three? How do you vote?
Yay.
Ward four?
Yay.
Ward five? Ward six?
Yay.
Ward seven?
Yay.
Okay, thank you. We will then move to approval of the minutes of the special call board meeting of October the seventeenth and the special call meeting of November thirteenth.
Move approval of the minutes of the special call board meeting of October seventeenth and the special call meeting of November thirteenth.
We have a motion to approve both sets of minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second.
Mayor, I was absent from the second meeting and questions, so I'll abstain in voting.
Okay, we will start with reverse order of this now. Ward seven?
Yay.
Ward six?
Yay.
Ward five? Ward four?
Abstain.
Ward three?
Yay.
Ward two?
Yay.
Ward one?
Yay.
Jim, you can second some things if you wish to.
Thank you, sir.
Comments by the mayor and the board. We had a presentation to the city, an award given to the sanitation department. Head, Sharon Boyd, if you'll come up to the front and show this award. It was a support from the Guard and the Reserve organization in regard to our sanitation departments, the support to some of the employees that were sent overseas and came back and so forth. Congratulations for your support in this area.
May I say, sir?
Yes.
As it was an honor to receive this award on behalf of the servicemen and women who served in Afghanistan and Iraq, it is my privilege to present this award to the mayor and the board of all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Ms. Boyd, thank you very much for that. Ms. Boyd, one question I want to ask you. I know several board meetings ago, the board adopted the solid waste ordinance and the board instructed for reports to be given back as to how that ordinance is being enforced and implemented. I know there's, I've seen at least one or more corrals that is now prohibited by law in the city historical that now stands to exist. Do you know when we'll get some reports on the status and the implementation and the ramifications of that ordinance?
I'm conscious of the justice of the citizens, just how the citizens are being relative to the ones over on Eric Road. I think this is a big thing. I mean, possibly not in my knowledge, but it's a last week, they're possibly taking that. So once killed down on Highway, whatever, let them about two or three months. We are kind of, uh...
Perkins. Thank you.
Being very precise and efficient and then we start to tell them.
Thank you. Just make sure we get frequent reports and, you know, trying to keep it fit and beautified. But thank you for that report.
Our next item is citizens' comments.
Good evening to the mayor and board. My name is Alvin Turner Ward Sepp. Citizens have two concerns. We, after the last meeting, we've been looking at situation about 200 feet. We looked at First Baptist, Griffin, Second Baptist, and First United Methodist. And we just want to know that with those churches, then are they, uh, 200 feet? You know, not complying with, uh, how they want to reduce it from 200 feet to 150? Our second concern is the black paper and hole on the building that outside here. Concerned that if someone is there, that they would have to fix it, ESP. It looks very sad.
Mr. Turner, are you talking about the building right here on Main Street in Washington? What is going on there? Is that Ben, is that you or Bill? Is that big open hole that's blocking the sidewalk? Do we have any opportunity to compel action? It's clearly a public safety issue.
We could. But it's a, you know, it's a current sort of way to try to get rid of that. This is an issue, showing the chair on the building. But that's an option if we have.
How do we move forward with, how do we make a decision and how do we move forward with that? This is not something that just happened over the last couple of days, as you know. It's weeks and months now of this thing. So who makes that decision? Is that something you're looking for?
Well, we could send a letter to our department. We could follow through with the building, the block, and the doors, and build the feathers. We could have, we could make an offer. I said private reason on the phone, do it that way. Actually, previous owners is who we had notified. We could send a letter to previous owners of the building. The messenger came up that, oh, the stucco repair, we'll get the repair work process to sell it. The messenger, the transaction occurred, the new owners said, wow. What they thought was a pick-up on our repair, the stucco works, maybe that's the lending for the people on our house. Wow. Send the other new owner a letter, start the process, and sell it.
Thank you, sir. In future, if all aldermen would please be recognized by the chair before you start asking questions, it would be appreciated. Do we have any other citizen comments this evening? Remember, three minutes is the time.
It'll take about 30 seconds if I sound. Michael Gleese, it's up from Matt Cox as well. Today, as I'm driving over, I'm driving on Glenn Street, a construction company, I think Table Construction. There's been parking, a trailer, empty trailer on that road. It's a very narrow road. I don't know what the parking on the side of the road restrictions are. This is not a vehicle, not a car. It's an empty, large construction trailer. I certainly hope not to see it over the road.
Did you consult and invite other departments? Any other public appearance this evening? If not, we'll move forward. We have a presentation for the proposal of the health coverage for the calendar year of 2008. Tim, are you here? You are here.
Evening, mayor, board. We've presented a proposal for renewal for the current health insurance plan. They required a sixty-day notice for that. And some of the changes that were proposed on the dental and life insurance contract rates, Marquita had asked me to give some additional numbers. As we pursue those numbers, Humana, which is the current health insurance carrier, who had originally proposed no increase of this year's health insurance plan cost, notified us if the city is to select the dental contract and life insurance proposal that they're offering, they would extend a multi-line discount in the medical plan, which would wait till a 1% discount off of the current plan. In addition to that, they've also then proposed to add a vision benefit plan to the current medical contract, so the current cost of the program. Have finalized those proposal contract numbers to those all costs and Marquita and Randy. Also presented proposals of the act of the shield and the denial that we received from UnitedHealthcare, the lack of network access still in the urban area. After finalizing the review of those contracts and the rates which are in your packet, Humana continues to offer the best contract rate for your plans out there currently. We understand that the city made this decision, recommended that contract change to a principal for the dental and life insurance to change those contracts.
Questions for any of the board members?
Tim, pending approval tonight, what would be the effective date for the benefits? January first.
And Mr. Cox, did you find that this was a slight saving for it, about 1%?
It is. And our last year was about saving money, basically. Compared to our previous carrier, we saved about $100,000. With this new carrier, we're able to have a slight decrease. But the big news with our coverage this year is that we'll be adding a vision plan for our city employees that will provide an annual visit for our employees to have their eyes checked, as well as cover a significant portion of any corrective glasses or contact lenses that they might require. So while there is a slight reduction in cost that we feel is a city to pass along, as well as to employees who have family coverage, the main news here is that we're adding a new benefit to the programs.
The only other change involved was also a couple of modifications which were outlined on a benefit comparison to the current benefit structure of the Humana contract, which would be a change to some facility charges. Current plan requires both a copayment, then meet the calendar year deductible, and then the contract would pay 80% for outpatient hospital testing for MRIs, CAT scans, tests of those nature, and also a pre-standing facilities. Contract would propose to change those just to a calendar year deductible, 80%. No longer would it require copayments for every visit for those types of facility tests. Also a change on the emergency room benefits. The contract currently requires $150 copayment, and it would then pay 100% after calendar year deductible. The change to the new contract would simply be a copayment per emergency room visit, and then those emergency services would be covered at 100%. So remove the calendar year deductible aspect from that. So both of those are enhancements to the current contract language. And the only other change to that contract is the increase of visits for physical therapy are limited to 22 visits for the calendar year, and the contract will increase that to 30 visits.
You still there?
Yep.
Any other questions? With your permission, then, I would like for us to go down to consideration of approval of this.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We approve the contract with Humana. We will start with board one. How do you vote?
Yay.
Ward two?
Yay.
Ward three?
Yay.
Ward four?
Yay.
Ward five?
Yay.
Ward six?
Nay.
Ward seven?
Yay.
Two nays, right, six and seven?
Yay.
Yay, oh, excuse me. Okay, so we had six, four, and one again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for talking.
The next item on the agenda tonight is consideration of an override of the mayor's veto of the board of action taken at the November 20th, 2007 meeting, approving the amendment site plan request by Mr. Moreland for Green Oaks Plaza Phase Two.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a three-minute break?
A three-minute break?
Yeah.
Suppose we could have a three-minute break? Does that go along with everybody else? Have a three-minute break? What would this be referring to, Mr. Park?
You just need a break.
You need a break. We might give you a bathroom.
Well, three minutes, that'd be okay?
Three minutes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, while I know you, Mr. Mayor, disagree with my position on the issue of Mr. Moreland's site plan and the amendment to it, and probably some of my colleagues disagree as well, I firmly believe that the situation, you need to understand that the right to grant the amendment is to grant the amendment. In order to do that, we need to have a motion to override your veto of the board's previous action granting that amendment. So I will be, I offer a motion to override your veto of the site plan amendment for Mr. Moreland in Green Oaks Phase Two on Highway 12.
Do we have a second? Override the, overriding veto?
Second.
Mr. Mills is seconded?
Mr. Cox seconded.
Cox seconded.
You missed that one. Cox seconded, Jim.
Okay.
We will now vote.
If there's any other discussion, Mr. Mayor, we got a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor, yes. You want to recognize?
Please. I wasn't here at the last board meeting, so I may have missed some of the conversation related to this. Mr. Griffith, I've read some stuff in the newspaper that I know isn't always accurate. And one of the things that was attributed to you is that you had described this sign as legally non-conforming. Could you, if that is the word you use, could you describe what that means? Because something that seems legal seems like it's okay.
So legally non-conforming billboard and non-conforming is due to its location to other billboards around the city. The city sign requires 26, distance separation from the billboard. The user can build a billboard that's 500 feet from one, that's seven, that's ten. So the billboard is in place far too inactive as the sign boards. So it's an outdated idea.
So there's no city ordinance or anything that would compel us to take down this sign? If the veto override fails, would we be compelling that the sign be removed as a condition of whether it be continuing power at this location or other things? So what happens if the veto is not, if the veto is not overridden, if veto is sustained, what happens next? Because what Mr. Griffith just explained to me is that the city can't compel the sign to be taken down because it's legally non-conforming.
With all the cities, Mr. Moreland had to do this time is comply with the site plan that was presented and approved. All that's here today in front of you is an override of an approval, an approval of allowing the amendment of the site. He's seeking to amend the site plan that was approved, the building was built up. The amendment has to do with taking down the sign. City has never compelled that Mr. Moreland take down the sign. City has done, as the city has said, "Mr. Moreland, here's the site plan you have approved, and you built this building. Now you come back after it's been approved, and you're asking for amendment after the building's already built." So the city's position was, building department's position was, is that the site plan's been approved, and we're not going to allow the amendment because the building's already built. So that's where we are, that's where we sit today.
So I guess just from a...
And the city, and as you know, in any building in the city, you know, being a contractor, that if you don't have a certificate of occupancy, you can't, city can't provide electricity. So technically, yes, to be able to get electricity, you have to have a certificate of occupancy. So technically, I guess you could say the sign, that you get the electricity, you have to comply with the site plan to get the certificate of occupancy. So that in result, you'd be able to remove the sign to get the certificate of occupancy. But the city compelling Mr. Moreland to take down the sign, absolutely not. Never has.
But for him to have power, to continue to have power at his building, to have occupants to be in business, et cetera, it would be a condition based...
To receive a certificate of occupancy in the city. You would have to comply with the site plan.
Ben, in the year that you've been here, almost a year, have we ever amended a site plan before? I know since on my term that we've amended site plans, and I know that certainly in previous terms, is there any protocol or any, as in all assists of the attorney as well, there any things that we should look at when we look at amending a site plan? You know, are there any legal requirements or any things that, you know, like when a zoning change, there's very clear guidelines, but what about on an amended site plan? Mr. Griffith, to your knowledge, did anyone from the city advise Mr. Moreland that he would need to remove the sign going back to the original site plan request?
I was not aware of it.
That's why we had your hand up for it.
Any other aldermen have questions? You have a question, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is not a, this is strictly the item that is up tonight is for the purpose of overriding the veto. So any other participation, Mr. Moreland, I don't mean to take this as a personal thing, but this is strictly...
But I would like to correct a error that has been made here tonight. This is the rabbit in trouble, if I may so.
I'll give you a very short response.
The reason I had taken down the sign, Dale Reed, Roger Mann, and Bill all come down. They all said the sign counted the same as a building. If the sign stayed, I had to move my building over. They were three people with power in this city, people that make decisions in this city. That's why I decided, I said I would take the sign down. Since then, we found out that there was no, in your testimony, everybody else's testimony, the sign is legal. Therefore, I think a sign should be, the amendment to the sign should be. And as far as what the city attorney said, this constitutes nothing other than blackmail on taking that sign down. That's all it is.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other board members that'd like to comment? We have a motion...
I think we had three vendors to submit bids and Southern Electric Corporation of Flowood was the lowest bid. And they bid two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Of course, we looked at dividing it three ways as... That's the only explanation that I can give you is it's just the cost of materials and then that it transpired over the period of time.
Ed, has this revised cost estimate, the results of the bids been conveyed to the hospital?
No, sir, they have not.
Yeah, it wasn't that much. I thought they were going to carry them out on stretch.
I can, you know, pretty much feel that these are, that these are good prices. All of the bids were very close.
Within a couple of thousands of each other.
Yes. It's just, you know, that's what we're paying for.
Anyone else got questions to ask of Ed on this?
We'll just have a motion to refer this to Infrastructure Committee, see if we can't review the costs as well as come up with any other options. Make it in any way on this. Engineering review.
Motion is second. Board one, how do you vote? Board two?
Can you hear the motion?
Uh, to move this eighty thousand dollar increase to Infrastructure Committee.
Yay.
Uh, board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
It passes, Ed.
Matt, do you have a date for sending these?
We do not because we've got to set on when we can based on the other items.
Uh, all the airport items are consent. That one item was taken off the agenda. It brings us down to Building Codes and Planning Department. And the majority of items on it tonight pertaining to dilapidated structures, et cetera.
Mr. Mayor, may I have permission to answer a couple of brief questions?
You may ask permission to, yes, you can.
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Griffith, I was a little bit satisfied by answering your last board meeting. Let me ask you, the press got two questions. Just give me a yes, no answer to this question. Is there any, or did any person or group or organization request for you to bring this to the board?
No, sir.
You're telling us you're bringing it on your own?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and let me just make sure we're clear before we get into this. Mr. Turner brought this up on the comment section, and I'm sure you've explained this to us, but it's my understanding that there is nothing language otherwise in the proposed ordinance that seeks to reduce the distance requirement from two hundred and fifty feet to a hundred feet or thirty yards with regard to the sale of whiskey, beer, light wines, unless you're to a church or school.
That language has been struck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the first item that we have is consideration to advertise and hold a public hearing. Be held December the eighteenth to adopt orders replacing special use exception. Ben, would you take it from there, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The item before you is the proposed conditional use draft ordinance, and also there's a resolution for establishing application fees. Taking the Vice Mayor and some of the other comments from the last meeting, I revised that draft, which y'all have in your packet, did strike through and double underline so you're clear to see what had been revised. And I know I've talked to most of y'all individually, and I believe I've addressed everyone's concerns and that we'll have something that can move forward on this item. So this item this evening is to ask permission to advertise and actually hold the second public hearing, the first one being held by the planning zone commission in November, and move forward with that.
Questions from any of the board members? Then do I hear a motion to set up a public hearing on December the eighteenth? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion is second. We've had lots of discussion at the last board meeting regarding this, and I see no reason to continue all that excessive discussion. We will now vote. Jim, this is a motion to have a public hearing on the eighteenth to adopt an ordinance replacing the special use exception.
Yes.
Uh, board one? Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
Thank you. Would you go to the second item pertaining to a public hearing?
Yes, sir, the second item is very closely related to the first. It's a ordinance that provides the chart of permitted uses, and it coincides with the first replacing special use exception with conditional uses. It also includes in the permitted use chart zoning categories that are not included in the existing charter permitted uses such as agricultural as well as, so this brings both the permitted use chart and the conditional use into alignment, and they both go in together. Again, they're two separate ordinances, but they do go coincide and are very closely related.
Any questions pertaining to this particular item?
Just a quick question. Are these changes also part of the conference of planning? Or is it something you want to do additionally?
I don't, I don't think, and I've, I'd have to look again at the conference plan. In a general, as a general answer to update of the zoning regs, I would say yes, but as far as anything specifically, I would say I don't think there's anything that's specific in the conference.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move second.
We have a motion is second that we approve for a public hearing on December the eighteenth to adopt the orders of many to revise it, uh, chart of permission, chart of permitted uses. Board one, how do you vote? Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Nay.
Board seven?
Yay.
It passes. Next item, please.
Um, Mr. Mayor, before we go into our code enforcement items, Mr. Lyles answered Mr. Perkins' request earlier for an update on enforcement of the sanitation ordinance. Mr. Lyles put together a couple of numbers that Mr. Perkins and probably some of the other board members may be interested in here, just real briefly, if that's all right.
Well, that's not on the agenda, but we'll make a little run for it to be very brief.
Appreciate it.
It's quite simple, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just on the private, we've taken several items down. We've talked to either owners of the property there in the process. We'll give them a little bit of time to get down. We've got three that same question that we're working on now, but as far as the first time violations, we have probably issued our department, just off the top of my head, I'd say seventy-five first time offenses, probably anywhere close to a dozen, second time, probably five third time, three fourth time, and we're in the process. Y'all can get ready next month. Y'all are looking at some fifth time offenses coming towards you.
Thanks, Matt.
And that's eighty-five, I see off the top of my head, but that includes like single household development. I'm guessing we've probably hit twenty single household duplexes, twenty-five, so you're looking at two to three door hangers each time, and some quadruplexes, I'd say at least twenty-five at times four. So you're looking at estimated, probably we've probably close to a hundred and seventy to two hundred door hangers out just in the last month.
All right, let's go back to the listed business, please.
All right, Mr. Mayor, our first one up is going to be case number zero seven, one, five, three, dilapidated house structure, Ms. Sally Barnes. Our recommendations be staff recommendation board finds that the subject property is not in compliance and directs the city staff to notify property owner. Of record that demolition and cleanup process shall commence immediately, and that a lien shall be placed on the real property in order to recover all cost and expenses incurred.
Is there one here from the, that is related or has knowledge of this particular parcel this evening? If not, do I hear a motion that we proceed with the recommendations?
Mr. Mayor, board, I would move that the board find this fact that the property cited case number zero seven, one, five, three, the structure at, on West Main Street, supposedly owned by a Sally Barnes, in its current condition is a menace to public health and safety. We also find this fact that the property owner of record has five days to purchase a demolition permit from the building department to demolish the structure, remove the debris from the demolition, clean the lot, bring the property into compliance with the city's ordinances. And further, that the board may adjudicate the actual cost of correcting the violation if the owner of the property does not clear the property and do those things, previous intervention, adding court cost and preferring the case to chance report the legal action in collection of all applicable cost and penalties through the system of liens against the real property.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion is second. We will vote. Board one?
Yay.
Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
Thank you. Your next item, please.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is going to be case number zero seven, two, two, zero. It's going to be Mr. Bush's property. Mr. Bush is with us tonight. We've had a little update. I've talked with Mr. Corey about this since the packets came out. Our recommendation as a staff, because he's done a little bit of work, is to receive a two-week extension to bring the property in compliance with the city ordinances. Code inspector shall recheck the property and update the board of said progress in the end of the two weeks. Board of officers then shall determine if any further action is to be required. I think Mr. Bush would like to...
Mr. Bush, yeah, hi. Two-week extension, is that adequate? And I understand, but this is the second time that we've given you an extension, I believe. And the recommendation on the building code of office, two weeks, is that correct?
Yes, sir. What I've tried to explain to Mr. Bush, if he'll just bring what we're trying to get in compliance, he's wanting to tear down and redo some of the property. But our optic is, is within the two weeks, because we gave him a thirty, and then we'll give him another two-week extension, is to get what little we've asked for him to do in compliance, his building will be within code to be able to spend, so he'll be able to redo this next summer, what he's trying to get done itself. I think a two-week extension's about, should be sufficient to get what he should have had already done.
Do we have a motion? Yes.
Mr. Bush, you understand now, the board gives us two weeks, they're going to expect for it to be, I would think that the board's going to expect for it to be done, you know, have it done in that period of time? No, no, well, I'm just asking, and I'm not arguing for an extension, I'm just saying the board had given one already, but, you know.
He was here at the board meeting too, that we're getting from that, when he, thirty days then, so...
Right, I thought we did.
Yes, sir.
So actually, this would make it thirty plus fourteen, plus forty-five days from the time that he knew that it was, uh, something needed to be done. Uh, Mr. Corey, I thank you.
Mr. Bush, thank you for coming out here too. We're really asking, just to have an update sometime, because we're willing to work with you on that. I would move that we grant the extension of the property at five, two, eight, Vine Street, two-week extension with the code enforcement officer, bring the court back and go along next week.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion was a second. We will now have roll call vote. Board one? Board two?
No.
No, okay. Board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
Uh, next item.
All right, Mr. Mayor, this is going to be case number zero seven, three, oh, one. It's going to be located on Dr. Mark, Dr. Tanner's Drive up there on Washington. It's going, this is to be tabled, this reasonable one tabled, this item has been tabled until such time as necessary for the Habitat Emane to proceed with acquisition, acquisition of subject property for demolition and new construction. Habitat Emane is completed, the case shall be considered closed. In other words, what we've contacted the Habitat, and they're in the process now finish, finalize where they own the property, pretend as they own it, they guarantee us they're fixing to get it cleaned up, so we just want to leave it tabled till they finish the acquisition.
So we take no motion?
Right.
Next item? Six?
Mr. Mayor, this is case number zero seven, three, oh, three, regarding property at one oh, one, Curtis Circle. Board finds that such property is not in compliance and directs the city staff to notify property owner of record that demolition and cleanup shall commence immediately, and that a lien shall then be placed on the real property in order to recover all cost and expenses incurred.
Is there one, anyone here who represents that property? That's why we don't have anyone here. Yes.
Uh, I move that the board finds this fact that the property at one oh, one, Curtis Circle in its current condition is a menace to public health, safety, and welfare of the community. The board also finds following this fact, the property owner of record has five days to purchase demolition permit from the building department to demolish the structure, remove all debris, and clean the lot, to bring the property into compliance with the city ordinances, and also that the board may adjudicate the actual cost of correcting violation, and will add twenty-five percent of the actual cost, preferring the case of change report to legal action in relation to the cost of penalties to the use of liens.
Second.
Motion is second. Board one, how do you vote?
Yay.
Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
Uh, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is case number zero seven dash three oh, six. This is also located on Curtis Circle with the Donson family. We recommend that the subject property is not in compliance and directs the city staff to notify property owner of record that process shall commence immediately, that a lien shall then be placed on the real property in order to recover all cost and expenses incurred.
Is there anyone from this particular family here tonight to speak? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the board finds this fact that the property associated with code enforcement case number zero seven dash three, oh, six, located on Curtis Circle, in its current condition is a menace to public health, safety, and welfare of the community. The board also finds this fact that the property owner of record has five days to purchase demolition permit from the building department to demolish the structure, remove all debris, and clean the lot, bring the property into compliance with the city ordinances, and also that the board may adjudicate the actual cost of correcting violation by adding twenty-five percent of the actual cost, preferring the case of change report to legal action in relation to the cost of penalties to the use of liens.
Second.
A motion is second. We will now vote. Board one?
Yay.
Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
Exactly what he said he's going to do, I do believe that deeply, but I have also know that sometimes circumstances change, and without having something specified clearly that can then transfer to another party if they pick up this development or whatever, I don't think the public interest is going to be protected.
The final plat must come back to us to look at all these things.
With the homeowners association.
That's my intention is to incorporate these in the final plat, which I'll look at. But I can't look forward, my engineer on this basically out until, you know, we get through this meeting.
So it's your intention to incorporate the concerns that we talked about in trying to reflect all of these, both aesthetic and engineering design concepts in the final plat, and if you bring the final plat back and doesn't have those incorporated to the satisfactory approval of either the city staff or the board? Then you would anticipate that not being accepted.
I would, I need to have Mr. Griffith, you know, outline those, those several concerns and then I'll work with the staff.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your healthcare needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in healthcare.
Uh, we approved fifteen preliminary subdivision plats. Approved nine final subdivision plats, two special use exceptions, and two variances. We approved two site plan reviews, ten, and denied one. Zoning map amendments, approved sixteen, zoning regulation ordinances, approved seven. Uh, remind you that this is a volunteer group, works very hard. Once a month, we meet, and we're happy to be able to serve the city, and happy to be chairman of that commission. I think that we have shown, are able to meet with developers, and frequently work out issues that are presented to the city. Very pleased that you've put Mr. Griffith in place. He's really been an asset to us and has helped us move along. And we have, I think, our level is here.
Mr. Moore was here earlier.
He was here, and probably know who the representative is ours.
On behalf of the mayor and the staff, I would like to thank you for you all graciously serving on planning the zoning. You know, you get a lot of flack on that particular group, and some of us appreciate y'all's diligence and your attendance.
Be happy to hear any suggestions or issues, maybe that you've seen.
I think we're on a good path at this time. You've got a good man that's kind of helping to direct you all, and there's been a lot of progress made, I believe, with this direction that we've offered to you.
Yes, and, you know, it's exciting time to be in Starkville and see all this development that's going on between the proud city, and about the board and commissioners that have used projects as they come. We see all this development going on, and people have, and...
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming tonight. This brings us now back to the electric department, Ed. We want to roast some more.
City clerk.
My city clerk, excuse me.
Mayor and board, moving through the claim document as of November twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven.
Second.
All those in favor, we will start with the vote. Board one?
Yay.
Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Nay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Nay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
It passes. Uh, and I believe the second item was on the consent agenda, wasn't it?
Correct.
Brings us to the electric department, Ed, and this is pertaining to the first two items.
Yes, sir, the first two items relate to Mississippi State. Probably in, prior to two thousand and one, Mississippi State was a Starkville Electric Company customer, scheduled D customer, and in two thousand and one, they elected to change from the Schedule D to a Schedule, it was a interruptible power contract with TBA. It was entitled fixed price interruptible. During that time, they constructed or purchased and installed a generation facility to take the, to generate power during the time that TBA required them to be interrupted or down, shut, you know, shut down. Recently, about the last year, we've been in negotiations, TBA and Mississippi State are doing negotiations concerning TBA purchasing power generated by this facility, Mississippi State's. The contract has been developed, but it hasn't been signed yet. But in order to do that, TBA requires that they give up the fixed price interruptible rate schedule and revert back to the Schedule D rate that they were under six years ago, seven years ago. In order to do that, we are, had to write a contract, power contract, between the city of Starkville and Mississippi State. In that contract, it basically stipulates as to where the power will be delivered, how it will be metered, payment responsibilities, et cetera. Our, we had a contract, both between TBA and the city of Starkville, and basically what this, bottom line, what this contract states is that it, Starkville Electric Company hold during the times that Mississippi State generates power. I feel like that we, we owe for Mississippi State and for Starkville Electric Company to hold. Our power contract will run for approximately five years, and all that to renew for addition by Mississippi State's generation contract has run for approximately twenty years. I would request that the board allow for the signing of these two contracts.
Do we have any questions from any of the homeowners pertaining to these contracts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Roy.
Has our city attorney reviewed the contracts or so, what is his recommendation?
I have, as a matter of fact, myself and the school, and Mr. Hattaway, and two members of the electric department, all met with TBA to go over these contracts. The changes that we've requested, I believe, have been dissolved, so we don't have any problem with the contract from a legal standpoint and city standpoint.
Mayor and board, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the electrical power contract between Mississippi State and Starkville Electric Company.
Do we have a second? Jim, you going to second in, Langton Knight?
Yeah, I couldn't hear him, Mayor.
He's, Richard is suggesting that we move to let the mayor sign the contracts for the Starkville Electric Company.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion is second. We'll start now. Number one, how do you vote?
Yay.
Number two?
Yay.
Number three?
Yay.
Number four?
Yay.
Number five?
Yay.
Number six?
Yay.
Number seven?
Yay.
Passes, thank you, Edward.
Uh, item number three that I have, Mr. Mayor, is I would request the board allow for the signing of this amendment to our joint use contract, joint use pole rental contract with AT&amp;T. What it basically does, it changes the index of which the original contract, the nineteen ninety contract, used the telephone company pole index, and it's changing from that to the Handley Whitman index, and it's just basically a... Uh, and it's just basically a way that, uh, they agreed to, um, pay for a pole with the different attachments and different size pole, different heights of poles, amazing that sort. Uh, and I would request that, uh, the mayor be allowed to sign this.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I'll move, but first let me ask city attorney, uh, based upon what Roy had asked earlier, did you have a chance to review this and have any concern?
The way I understand this, uh, upon what you brought to me is we're not amending the actual contract, we're just amending how the contract price is figured on, we're using a different index, we're not, correct?
That's it, that's it.
We're not amending the actual terminology or anything, it's just the way that the, the prices are figured because that index is not available to us, so.
I would motion approval, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the joint use pole agreement between Starfield Electric Department and AT&amp;T.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Just a question for, for Ed.
We have a question.
When do we have the opportunity to talk about requiring when we go underground with our electrical lines like we do with Northland Cable to compel that from, from the new AT&amp;T?
I think that's gonna be pretty much a, uh, city one-on-one, uh, type discussion with, with representatives of the AT&amp;T. This contract will pretty much be generated by TVB, uh, the, uh, their members, but I think it's, we're probably gonna have to go one-on-one with the city, with AT&amp;T.
So is that, you mean like a new contract or just, I mean, is it true that like Highway twelve in front of Harvey's? All of our power is underground, Northland Cable's underground, but those poles are still there because it's Bill South and we have no way to put them underground with the rest of our.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's, that's just gonna be something the ci- the city will have to try to work out in the future.
We have a motion and a second. We will start. Board one, how do you vote?
Yay.
Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Nay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
Uh, thank you, Edward.
Kind of nay or yay?
Yes.
Mayor, before you proceed, I, I had motioned approval of the first item, but we hadn't done the second, so let me go ahead and make a formal motion to approve authorization for you to sign the, uh, electric contract between Starfield Electric Department and TBA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Board one?
I'm voting in the affirmative.
We have one affirmative. Board two?
Yay.
Board three? Board three? Quit talking, vote. How you gonna vote? Yay, okay. Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
This brings us down, I believe everything else is consent, good personnel. Mr. Boyd, how are you this evening?
Just fine, you?
Well.
Good, good.
Judge, you're getting settled into Starfield quite well.
Yes, sir, I am now resident.
Excellent. I believe you have three personnel items.
Three personnel items, yes, yes, we do. The first item is that we would request the, uh, the board to authorize the hire of Marvin Young as a replacement full-time driver for the sanitation department. This is following a, uh, prior approval by the board to advertise for the position, um, that come in at a grade six step one, annual salary of nineteen thousand eight ninety-four oh one.
Mr. Boyd, let me just say that having helped everybody in City Hall and seeing you at work, you've been doing an excellent job, so let me go ahead and just make a motion to approve all three hires that we have here on the personnel, because I've looked over all three and haven't seen any issue with any of them.
Mr. Mayor, uh, let's go individual.
I made a motion.
Well, he made a motion, Roy, and, uh, we're gonna have to vote his motion down first.
Go, go ahead, it's nothing controversial, go ahead, motion found, second.
You gonna second the motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we'll now vote on the motion.
Have no controversy, it is, go ahead.
Board one?
Yes.
Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Sure.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
Uh, thank you, sir. Did I skip anything? Uh, I think it brings us down to the executive session, which is going to be the consent agenda. Yes, all right, go ahead and make.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move approval of the items listed on the consent agenda and agreed to by the board at the start of the meeting, which I'll be happy to enumerate again if you would like.
Second, sir. Do we have a second to that, uh, consent?
Second.
All right, we'll vote. Board one?
Yes.
Board two?
Yay.
Board three?
Yay.
Board four?
Yay.
Board five?
Yay.
Board six?
Yay.
Board seven?
Yay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move the meeting to close to determine whether or not executive session committee player.
We have a motion to, uh, close the meeting to determine the issues on the executive session. Do we have a second to the motion?
There's no need for a second on the motion.
Still there, Jim?
Yep.
You ain't gone for a battery or nothing? Go on, motion.